There they are. Oh, oh, really? Okay. And how, but we can turn them on just by activating them?
Yeah.
Mine, mine just wasn't working. Okay, good afternoon and welcome. This is Committee of the Whole meeting. And just before we start, I'd, I'd ask a member of the audience to take some pictures of council at work. So if there's any objections from counselors, he should say so now. But I picked the person right in the middle so he could get exactly this group. And it was a mere accident that it was a smaller group than, than I expected. But it'll fit in the frame. And it'll show up, it'll show up on a website in some future, future date. So. Smile, smile. And he's not doing it for anything other than the fact that I actually asked. So while we're working, he'll find some great positive time when we're in deep debate. Starting though, with our calling to order, the Wednesday, August 1st Committee of the Whole Meeting, it's 1:00 PM almost exactly. And we have a very simple agenda that was circulated. So first, a motion to adopt the agenda circulated. Thank you, Counselor Mueller and Counselor Shanks for seconding. All those in favor? No. Counselor Mueller and Counselor Wright. I actually do know who I'm working with. But I was still thinking of the fact that it was smaller than normal and who was missing. And going on that. Okay. All those in favor? That's carried. We have one business item. And we welcome Jana Zelensky from Landscape Architect Engagement Planner for Lanarch. I was gonna ask you what Lanarch stands for, but maybe you can tell us that. And we'll, we have a report from the Director. First motion to receive the report. Thank you, Counselor Wright, seconded by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor? And the Director of Planning want to introduce the topic? And then we'll go right into it.
Thank you, worship members of council. So the purpose of today is to hear from the consulting team that produced the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Council's received a number of updates so far on the plan. And this provides an opportunity to go and have a discussion in much more detail about both the process and the priorities. In terms of the team, today we have Jana Zelensky, who is a principal with Lanarch Consultants, Landscape Architect and Engagement Specialist there. The rest of the team involved Kate Evans, who is also a principal with Lanarch and Landscape Architect, and who very thoughtfully completed most of the draft before having a baby. Project lead was Erin Thompson from Planning Department. And the content expert is Perry Schmidt from, from Parks. So the rationale for the plan, it is an update to the 2006 Parks and Open Space Plan. It was thought at the time it needed to be updated to make sure that the initiatives were relevant for the next five to 10 to 20 years. The project involved an incredibly comprehensive engagement plan to it. It had focus groups, it had a statistically significant survey. Community associations were, were well involved. It was open house and then reports into council. So the plan will provide the district with both investment priorities, project priorities for both short, medium, and long term. Following the presentation, there'll be a little bit of updating still needed to the plan. We're just finalizing some trail maps. Then it would be finalized to come back to council at the September meeting for final adoption. It'll be posted on the web and there will be information sent to the community associations to let them know that as they were key players in the process. So I'll turn it over to Jenna and she'll be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you and thanks for having me here today. I will let you know I'm getting over a cough, so not contagious. But I've got my cough drops in my water, so if I pause, you know why. And what, what I wanted to start with was just a, a thank you from Kate Evans, my colleague who did the heavy lifting on this project. Unfortunate timing for her, she gets to be way at the very end. But all in good news, she's enjoying her new family member. So I'm gonna do my best to do the plan justice and all her hard work. I am very fortunate to have been involved in the process as it's progressed. I've really enjoyed learning about the parks and open spaces here in Seashell. I don't think I have to tell this group that you have a pretty exceptional community here, both geographically as well as the community members that live here. We got a chance to hear from quite a few of them as we were doing this process. So we're really excited about the outcomes and the plan that has come to fruition from all that effort. I'm gonna talk a little bit today about some background about the system. I will talk about the vision and goals that came forward through the planning process and provide some input on the key recommendations that are included in the plan. Now, there's a lot of information in the plan. You've noticed that it's quite beefy, so I'm not going to present everything today. But I am gonna try to hit the high notes and do my best to respond to any questions that you might have. So before we get started, I usually start with what Parks and Open Space Master Plan is. I think most people already know, but we always want to emphasize that it is really a long-term strategic document. It's not meant to be a play-by-play of exactly what's going to happen over the next 10 to 15 years. The idea with it is that it brings together a lot of the big ideas, provides a framework for the council and community to work forward with and select projects that make sense, given annual community planning and context that can be moved forward. There's kind of three big, well, four big components to the master plan. The first is the review of the existing system, a chance to look back at where we are today and what's been accomplished over the past 12 years, I guess. It's an opportunity for us to put together a framework for the future system. And this is the important, an important part. It really gives us a chance to look at, okay, here's the assets, here's how they're classified. And then we can start to see if there's any gaps in the systems that maybe we're gonna need to be working towards filling. It also talks about the guiding vision and principles. So these are the big picture directions that people are talking about to say, okay, this is really what we want to see. So when we get 10 years into the future, we can look back and say, yes, we have accomplished what we were trying to get towards. And then the big part of the plan is the prioritized recommendations that provide some direction and some potential projects that could be explored going forward. So a little bit about the process. As we mentioned, this one began just about a year ago. We started in fall 2017. And we had a chance at that stage to explore the existing system, review all the accomplishments and have been made, and undertake some initial engagement. This was a chance for us to raise awareness that the project was happening. We had the opportunity to meet with several community groups and community associations. There was a public event and an ideas questionnaire. And the focus of this first phase was really learning as much as we can about the parks, checking in on the ideas that were part of the 2006 plan, saying, are these still valid today? And then gathering the new ideas that we'll want to take forward into the future. In the phase, the second phase, that information was compiled into a full set of ideas. And that was brought back to the public. And a key focus of that was through the statistically valid survey. So basically, the ideas were presented to the community and we had a chance to hear back from them on what they thought were the most important ones to be carried forward into the plan. And we're now in Phase Three. And this is where we're working on consolidating everything into the draft master plan. So we have a draft that we've been able to share with you. And hopefully, we'll get some good feedback that we can incorporate as we do final refinements. And so when we get to the end of this, the outcome is intended to be a plan that the community council staff can all look to, to say, here's some ideas that we can work on and move towards over the next 10 years. Now, the great thing about doing an update is that we have a chance to look back on what has been accomplished. So there was a plan that was done in 2006. And often, what we find ourselves doing is saying, okay, well, what's next? Let's move forward and keep moving forward. This is our chance to look back and reflect to say, okay, let's, what have we done? What has been accomplished since 2006? And I think Seashell has a lot to be proud of. I've been involved in parks and open space planning for a very long time. And it gives me a lot of joy when I see a community making use of their master plans and being able to look back at that plan and say, okay, there's a whole bunch of stuff in this plan that you actually have put a lot of effort to accomplishing over the last 12 years. So congratulations on that. There's well over 100 projects that have been completed within that timeframe. That includes 26 different park improvements and additions, a whole bunch of beach access upgrades, a lot of chances for people to connect with the water, a number of trail improvements and linkages that help connect the community, a lot of park amenity improvements, things like washrooms and benches and things like that, that make parks really great places to be. Playground update projects to make sure their most important citizens are looked after. And streetscape garden and beautification projects. And these have been really important ones because what we heard through this process is people have a lot of pride in this community. They really feel like the quality of the spaces they have are important. And a lot of those projects really have been contributing to the quality that we see here. So in the master planning process, we do classify the parks into different categories. And that has a chance to say, okay, well, what really is this system all about? What's it made up of? So in the planning process, we did update the park classification system. And really, what this gives us a chance to do is to say, okay, well, how are the parks distributed in the community? Where are the key ones? Where are ones maybe that need to be developed? Where are some gaps in the system? So if we look at how things are distributed today, there's four community parks. And community parks really are the core destination parks in the community. They're the ones where people go spend a day, or maybe your visitors are gonna come spend some time, that's where a lot of celebrations occur. So those include places like Hackett Park and Friendship Park, Davis Bay and Mission Point Park. Really the key destination parks in the community. And these are really important ones to make sure they're cared for, refreshed, built upon, and big assets as a system. We've also got 16 nature parks. So these are our green natural spaces that people can go enjoy and spend some time in nature. So Seashell Marsh would be an example, Hidden Grove and Heritage Forest, the Chapman Creek area, places where you're actually getting quite close to nature. And when we talk about nature parks, we don't necessarily talk about all the areas that need to be protected in the district. There are development permits to do a lot of that. We're talking about areas that really bring value and recreational assets to people, giving them a chance to connect to nature. So when you talk about nature parks, we really want to talk about places where people are able to go and be close to nature. Three athletic parks. So this is where your active sport and recreation occurs. So the ones, the key ones for that are Kinnik Kinnik Park, Proctor Bike Park, and Seashell Skateboard Park. And obviously, you can imagine that there's some overlap in our categories because we also know there's sports fields at places like Hackett Park. But these are the places where you're gonna go see sports teams on any given day, a lot of activity specialized in focused recreation. You've got nine linear parks. And we talk about linear parks, these are the places where you go for a walk or can connect and go somewhere. So we're talking about places like Trail Bay Walkway or Davis Bay Walkway. Really those wonderful kind of connections where you might be out walking or taking your dog for a walk. Urban parks are some of those more smaller plaza-style parks or key urban destinations within the core part of the community. All these are located in the village and they're kind of meant to be part of the urban realm. Meant to be kind of a place where might be a focused celebration place or a place where people just hang out when they're visiting the downtown area. There are 17 neighborhood parks. So these are the parks that, you know, people living in the community get to go and enjoy. They might be going to a playground or taking their dog for a walk. They're typically allocated all throughout the communities. And each neighbor should, a neighborhood should have access to the type of amenities in those parks. Now, we've got 59 open beach accesses. There's a whole bunch of other ones that are unopened for a variety of reasons, including geographical challenges and things like that. But beach accesses are those points where people can make their way down to the water, often marked with a signage or maybe a bench in places where you get to celebrate basically the wonderful waterfront environment you guys have here. And then, of course, there's one provincial park up in East Purpose Bay, the Purpose, no. I knew I was gonna get that one wrong. Purpose Provincial Park, Purpose Bay Provincial Park? Which isn't actually part of Seashell's inventory, but it is an important part of the overall green space system here. So we just acknowledge that as part of the network. So we also had a chance to look at the trails network. And really, there has been a great focus over the past 12 years on creating some linkages in there, making sure that, you know, places or desire lines and informal routes have been protected and adding some linkages to different neighborhoods so people can get around the area a little bit more easily. So there are 15 major trail parks, which are kind of destinations people go to spend some time. So you can imagine the trails in Kinnik Kinnik Park, Trail Bay Walkway, Davis Bay Walkway, Chapman Creek Walkways, those types of destination trails. There's also about 30 minor or connector trails. And these are the really important connections that help people get to places where they need to go. So you can imagine maybe a little trail that connects at the end of a cul-de-sac that helps children get to school. Those are a fundamental part of the network and there's been a lot of effort in developing those. So that's not to say there isn't a lot of work to be done. A challenge for Seashell, of course, is that it is, it was previously distinct neighborhoods. So that means that there's a lot of limitations for connections between places. So this plan, this plan is going to talk a lot about trail linkages and moving towards more connected community in the future. So a little bit about what we heard. There was a great opportunity to connect with a lot of people. We did receive hundreds of comments. Kate diligently read through all of them. And she had a chance to distill some of the key themes. So starting from the top, what we did hear, and I think this is a really positive response, is that there is a lot of satisfaction with the current system. People feel like they are being well-served by their parks and open space. Not to say there wasn't any complaints, there always is. But there was a high degree of satisfaction with what people are seeing. We didn't hear a lot of feedback from organized sport groups. They were a group that we targeted, so we did reach out to different sport organizations. We heard back from a couple, but certainly not from the majority of them. And there's a number of reasons why that could be. Could be that the system is satisfying them right now. It could be that participation in organized sport is declining. It is in a lot of communities in the area right now. Or perhaps potentially, they just weren't able to engage in the process. So even though there wasn't a lot of feedback about a need or demand for a lot of organized sport facilities, it is an important thing to keep in the back of our mind as we move forward. We know athletic parks especially are the most, probably the most difficult to secure. They require large land bases, flat land bases, all of those kind of things. So keeping a view towards and the future, we don't have any specific recommendations for developing a new sport park, but it is something to bear in mind, making sure that land may be set aside in the future to accommodate that if needed. We did hear quite a bit about expansion and management or maintenance of current. And so one of the questions we did ask was if people would like more parks or if they'd like focus on improving. And we strongly heard that a focus on improving existing parks was a high priority. People really value what's already here and they want to make sure that those parks are being taken care of. There's a lot of pride in the community and so they want that reflected in their public spaces. Trails, and trails, and trails. We heard a lot about where they would like trails, what people want to do on trails, just that they don't want to drive all the time, they want to be able to walk or bike. So you're going to see trails come up again and again. Waterfront access and amenity. Obviously, people really value the fact that this is a waterfront community. They want to make sure that wherever possible, road ends are being opened, encroachments are being managed, and there's amenities for people to get out and enjoy the waterfront. And then the fact, last one is people talked a lot about what they like to do. And the most popular activities included walking, hiking, jogging, and dog walking. So it's not surprising to hear that trails are gonna be a priority. So the vision is kind of what we consider the collective imagining of the future. We take the themes and ideas that we heard, we ask people what their visions are, and we basically compile that into a statement that helps us, if you, you know, close your eyes and imagine, this is what we want our system to look like in the next 10 to 20 years. So there's lots of words up there. I, I'll read them, but maybe I'll encourage you as I'm reading them, just to try to reflect and see if you can see in your mind what we're saying. Quality parks and open spaces are a defining feature for the District of Seashell Community that invite community members and visitors of all abilities to pursue an active, healthy lifestyle. The Parks and Open Space System provides connectivity throughout the community and facilitates convenient connections to the area's natural features, waterfront assets, and commercial notes. The community is highlighted by focal destinations of public space for gathering and showcasing community character and pride, as well as providing animated destinations for a diverse audience of locals and visitors. The vision is supported by six different goals. And I always think of goals as somewhat of a checklist. So if you have a project and it meets these six goals, it's very likely going to support your vision and be an asset to your community moving forward. So the first one is focus on quality. Obviously, you know, it's great to have a lot of park spaces, but it's even better to have some really wonderful, high-quality spaces. So people want to make sure that the pride of place is reflected in the public spaces that they have. The second one is strengthen our connectivity. So allowing people to get out of their vehicles and move safely throughout the community by walking or biking. So people told us, you know, I want to walk to Kinnik Kinnik Park from downtown, or I'd like to ride my bike from Tuanek down to Seashell Village. Those are the type of things that people are looking for. The third one is respect our environment and natural features. Obviously, there's the Georgia Street, there's the inlet, there's the forests all around. There's essentially a lot of paradise. And people want to make sure that there's components of that preserved so this community still feels that way into the future. Promote accessibility and inclusivity. So people did talk a lot about wanting recreation for all ages and abilities. There's a lot of progress that's been made in the last 10 years about creating barrier-free environments and making sure that we're implementing some of those ideas in new parks as well as upgrades as we go forward. Five is to encourage a healthy, active community. So we all know that exercise makes us healthier. I don't think there's any debate on that one anymore. And having diverse and easily accessible spaces help us make those good decisions to be active and healthy in our futures. And then the last one is cost-effective and well-managed. There's a lot of fiscal responsibility that's required when managing a park system. And so making sure that when projects are selected, they really do support the vision, maintaining the assets that are there so that initial investments are maintained over time, as well as looking at opportunities to promote economic development. I'm gonna pause here and grab some water, but I don't know if there's any questions on the vision or goals before I move in.
Counsel seems to be in listening mode. I was gonna ask, when you went over the vision, what an animated destination was?
Think of a place, well, I'll give you my interpretation of it, but I think, I think of it as a place that has a lot of character. There's a lot of activity happening and there's a lot of enjoyment and happiness happening. I'll ask, again, we can always change that too, so.
I was just curious when I saw the word.
Okay. I will carry on. My voice is hanging in there. So the outcome of the process, there's 32 recommendations that are contained in the plan. And the idea is that each of those are intended to support the vision and goal. Each year, there would be an opportunity to review them and select the projects that seem to make more sense within that community context to be advanced. Recommendations are organized into three categories. And the first one are the community-wide projects. So these are the assets for the entire community. They're projects that are really going to make a difference for the people that live anywhere in the community. So these are a lot about the major trail connections or community parks. The second one would be the neighborhood-specific projects. And so these are a lot of the smaller projects would benefit for people living in the area. A lot of these were identified by working with the different community associations. And the third one are the operational recommendations. And these are a lot of ideas for policy and planning, management, information, things like that, that help maintain and manage the system. A lot of these would be more presented and brought forward by staff over time. So they're not typically large capital investments. Sorry. So what I'm gonna do is present the community-wide recommendations. I will touch briefly on the others. And then I answer any questions. So before I get into it, you're going to see as we go forward, a lot of the major recommendations are focused on trails. The great news is there was a lot of agreement from the community on this. People really like the idea of having a strongly connected community. The challenge is that trails can be very difficult to develop. Often, we're dealing with multi-jurisdictional components, desire lines where there's barriers existing, potentially a road structure that's not particularly well-set up for trails. So these aren't the types of projects that are probably gonna be accomplished next year. These are the types of trails that we start and we work towards as a long-term type of destination. That said, the rewards of having a well-connected community are extremely high. So there's a lot of benefit in pursuing some of these. So the first one is, of course, a big one. This would be a connection from Trail Bay to Davis Bay. People love both of these destinations. They enjoy visiting them. The challenge that they see is right now, they can't easily get between them. So Highway 101 is the only corridor and it's not particularly well-set up for pedestrians or cyclists. So this one really is a top priority for the community. But of course, as I mentioned, there's going to be a lot of challenges. We're talking about 3.6 kilometers between the two destinations, a lot of varied shorelines, multi-jurisdictional, as well as private property challenges. So likely, there's a route that exists that probably isn't an entirely waterfront route. Maybe there's some waterfront components, maybe there's some inland highway components, maybe there's some other connections. And it's intended that this one would be started and developed over many years. And it's intended that this one would be started and developed over many years. Number two on the list is the Sun Coaster Trail Development. So obviously, a big accomplishment in the past few years has been the Sun Coaster link between Salma Park and Airport. That provides a new trail connection and will eventually become part of the larger Sun Coaster Trail that's going to link, hopefully, the entire Sunshine Coast. The great news, well, the challenging news is there's about fourteen kilometers to get through Seashell. The great news is that this is a project that the SCRD is moving forward with, so there's a lot of opportunities to be part of that initiative and continue to make those connections. Like recommendation number one, this probably isn't a fully off-road multi-use connection. It's probably a combination that includes some roadways, some multi-root, multi-use trails, as well as other connections through the community. And number three, we just called active transportation connections. And so these are obviously, you know, we've got the two key trail connections that people talked about, but then other people did talk about being able to connect throughout the community. So these are the connections that would help bring communities or the different neighborhoods together. So there's four somewhat distinct ones that came out of this. The first one would be a connection between Kinniknik Park and Seashell Village, which is only about three-point-five kilometers, and there are some components of that existing today. The second one is an improved trail connection along Highway 101. So people really would be interested in seeing better pedestrian and cycling facilities along portions of this route. The third one is a connection between Seashell Village and Tuanek, which is about ten kilometers away. But being able to connect between the village and the northwest-northeastern communities is a big desire that people talked about. People do bike and walk out there today, but there is a lot of feedback that they don't necessarily feel safe while they're doing that. And then the fourth one is probably the easiest one, would be a strong connection between Porpoise Bay to the Salish Sea. And I do think there's a strong case for this one. I kinda did a nice little walk through there this morning, went through Seashell Marsh. And there's a lot of trails actually in place on this route already. So this one might be one of those quick wins that through some minor trail improvements and some signage, there's a stronger connection that can be made. And the photos at the top actually are from Tefino. And the reason we wanted to include them is they're actually the same place. So the top picture is a before picture of Highway Four as you head into town. And the bottom picture is the after picture of what the District managed to do to create a more friendly pedestrian and cycling destination. So there are cycling lanes now on the roadway. There's mid-block crossings, there's really strong pedestrian network that creates a lot of space for people. Obviously, this is a very urban example. We're talking about a mix of urban out to rural areas, so the trail connections will change throughout it. But I do think it is a good example of a community that came together and spent some time thinking about how they can make a more attractive place for people to spend their time. Number four is another trail connection. So this one we called the B.C. Hydro Right-of-Way Connectors. And really, what we want to do is look at that hydro right-of-way as an asset. I think it's about seventy-five meters wide, and there's not a lot of land use constraints within the corridor. And the great news is B.C. Hydro does permit high trails within their right-of-ways, provided they meet all their requirements and they're signed off on. The challenge for this particular route is it doesn't necessarily connect key locations. It's not, it's a little bit out of the way, so it's not quite as much of a desire line as some of the other locations. But the idea with it is that maybe there are some components of it that trails connections could to help support some of the other trail connections and desire lines that we'd like to see. The example on the right is Gatno Hydro Corridor Connection in Scarborough, Ontario. And I just thought it was a very interesting, maybe not the most scenic, but a very successful and well-used connection that they've managed to put in in a place where they didn't have a connection in that area. So number five is again another trails project. And this one is a smaller one. It's the idea of converting the boulevard to a pedestrian route. So people obviously love Trail Bay Waterfront and Snicket Park. The boulevard is the one piece between the two that is remaining as a vehicle corridor. People tend to treat it as a trail, so you've got walkers and cyclists and vehicles all kind of sharing a space right now. So people did express the desire to be able to say, okay, well, it'd be great to have that as a continuation of the walkway and have a full linkage all the way along. There is lane access available for the houses in the area, but we did hear some concerns around accessibility restrictions, people not being able to park quite as close to the waterfront, as well as there's a number of people that really enjoy parking out there and watching the waves in the winter, which is something is a little less desirable to do when you're standing outside and getting hit by them. But the good news is if this project did move forward, it could be a relatively simple task to consider closure of the road. Doesn't require a lot of capital investment to start with things like bollards or boulders to make the closure, and then over time, if it was decided, it could be converted into a full pedestrian walkway to match the standards on either side. So number six is not a trails project, it's a parks project. And this one is called the Hackett Park Community Gathering Space. So one of the questions that was discussed through this process was where the community would like to focus gatherings and events in the future. And Hackett Park was the location that seemed to resonate most with people. And I think this is in part because it already does host some events. It's very easy to access, it has a number of really great amenities, and it's in a good location. It's easy to get to from the downtown area, and you can see that it has quite a bit of space for people to make use of and enjoy. So there is opportunity to really continue to build it as a potential event destination with ideas like providing some electrical service so that events can take place, potentially some performance space, an upgraded playground, and some more seating and picnic facilities, the idea of fitness equipment to have it as a multi-use area, as well as some additional activities, all while keeping the lovely, mature trees that make it the place that it is today. So the recommendation here would be to move forward with more of a master planning process that would help define those types of improvements and move them forward to make it a park for celebration. Number seven is related to Mission Point Park, Brookman Park, and Lot One, which we called the Integrated Park Planning and Updates. So there's been a lot of great work getting a wonderful land base in that area. There's really a large area of park space that is now available. The challenge with it today is that it's all quite separate. So you don't necessarily visit Mission Point Park, Davis Bay Waterbunt, Brookman Park all at the same time. They're not necessarily easy to get to. But there is this really great opportunity is that it's really close to the eastern gateway to your community. There's wonderful opportunity to have it as a destination-type of park, and it potentially could be a launch point to a whole bunch of different activities like the waterfront up into Chapman Creek Trails. There's a huge opportunity to capitalize as a destination and a landmark for the community. So potentially, it could be a wonderful signature park. It has creekside, it has waterfront, has really wonderful green spaces. And if there was potential to make it a much more connected space, potentially accessible trail network, there's a lot of opportunity to have it as a really wonderful park destination. So this plan recommends an update. There was a Mission Point Park plan done several years ago. This plan recommends that that one would be updated, but also expanded to include all the park areas in the surrounding area and addressing one of the biggest barriers, I think, which is the Highway 101 and the separation that exists in that area. Related to that is the Chapman Creek Trail Right-of-Way. So we're back to trails again. People really do love this trail network. It's extremely popular. The challenge with it is it's not fully secured. There are portions that are on crown land or private land that people are using, but not necessarily guaranteed to be there for the future. The area shown in yellow is the Sun Coaster Trail, so that one has been secured. And so what the recommendation is to work towards securing a formal designation for the entire, for potentially an entire loop, one that would connect up one side of the creek and down the other, potentially connecting over a new creek crossing near the hatchery. And so the idea here is that in the long term, making sure that as development occurs or as opportunities occurs, trail dedication is going alongside of that, as well as if there is development in the area, providing strong connections from the neighborhood up into the trails network. Number nine is Kinniknik Park. This park is extremely well-loved, and it already had some enhancements planned for it, including adding some roofs to the field benches and some accessible trail upgrades. The plan really does recommend just carrying forward with those recommendations, improving the accessible trails network, and as well as just maintaining and managing and planning for the long term to consider that if additional field space or field changes are needed, are there opportunities within Kinniknik Park or near Kinniknik Park to connect with those? Number ten talks about a community gathering space for the eastern inlet areas. So this area, the communities in that area have grown over the past few years, and there are opportunities for them to continue to grow. And potentially with that comes opportunities to leverage some land or funding that could go towards a meaningful community project. So individually, each of these neighborhoods are probably too small to really be able to fund and facilitate a community gathering space. But collectively, this type of facility may be warranted. So previous input has shown that a community facility is desired, but it sounds like there are some mixed opinions on type and location. And so the recommendation for this plan would be to work with those neighborhoods to explore the opportunities, identify a location and a type of facility that would be warranted, and plan a process for moving forward. Recommendation number eleven is Ebtide Park. And so back in 2014, when the Water Resource Center was developed, there was a master plan that was developed for Ebtide. Funding wasn't available to move forward with the plan at that time, but there may be opportunities to move forward in the future. Right now, the park space is somewhat underutilized, and so wanting to make sure that that does become a contribution to the park system in the future. Really, what we would recommend with this one is to look at the park master plan at the same time that upgrades to Hackett Park are being considered, to make sure that any improvements in each of these parks aren't necessarily overlapping, but they're complementing one another. And the final one on our list is the Destination-Fenced Off-Leash Dog Area. So there has been a lot of discussion and a need identified in the community to have this type of facility. Right now, there are neighborhood parks that have off-leash areas, but right now, none of them are fenced. And so what people would like to see is the idea of if you have a dog that has a tendency to wander or might be in training, having a fenced off-leash area is a very big asset. Walking around the community, I can clearly see there's a lot of dogs here. So being able to move forward and identify a destination for this would be the recommendation. We did ask in the survey the preferred location for that. The preferred location selected was the airport lands. Obviously, the challenge, the benefit to that is there's not a lot of potential impacts to nearby land uses. The challenge with that is it's a bit harder to get to. So what the recommendations include is potentially moving forward. A lot of other communities have organized off-leash dog organizations or groups or associations that help advance these type of projects, and they do a lot in terms of providing maintenance, management, friendly policing, and helping really govern this type of facility. So that would be something that could be considered, and with that group, then a destination selected and moved forward with development. So that brings us to the end of the key community-wide recommendations. Now, there are a number of neighborhood-specific recommendations as well for each of the neighborhoods. As mentioned, we have the opportunity to work with community associations to develop these. And they really do focus on potential improvements to existing parks, potential improvements to beach accesses or development of beach accesses, identification of new park priorities that could be considered in the future, and then key linkages that would benefit the neighborhood. I won't go through all of these, but they are detailed out, and the idea with these is that every year, they'd look forward to say which projects can be implemented, work with, continue to work with the community associations to identify if there are new opportunities, and keep moving forward to create really great green spaces and linkages within each neighborhood. And then the last set are the operational recommendations. And these include the policy development, management, some of the information components. Not typically capital investments, but they're really considerations for managing and maintaining the system. So there's twelve in total, related to a wide variety of topics. A little bit about future park acquisition and development, recording where future parks might be needed, information and communications, and how to share information about the park system with the people that use it so we're able to communicate and let them know what they have. Accessibility considerations and guidelines to be used in parks, potential partnerships or ways that partnerships could be formed to move projects forward, some information about volunteers and how to encourage meaningful collaboration with the organizations or groups or individuals that might be interested in contributing, some guidelines for streetscapes, public art, and beautifications, as well as furnishings and amenities, as well as signage and wayfinding. A little bit of information about sea level rise adaptation, recognizing that a lot of the park spaces and beachfront accesses are directly on the water, making sure that investments are going to be protected and managed into the long term. And some suggestions for adaptive management and reviews and updates to the plan as you guys move forward, development or improvements to the parks' asset inventory. And the last one is about operations and maintenance allocation. And we always underline this one because there's a lot of investment and capital improvements that goes into a parks' project. And so making sure that every time a parks' project is considered, there's another associated consideration for what that means for managing and maintaining that going forward. So of course, then the question always is how do we pay for all of this? And so the report does include some funding strategies for the district to consider, ones that have been used in other communities or ones that are being used here today. Obviously, parks taxation remains the primary source of funding for parks and open spaces. There are several projects, especially in the community-wide category, that would need additional sources of funding, often looking to things like coordination with infrastructure funding or grants would be really important to pursuing, especially a lot of the trails projects that might be considered. So one of the questions we did ask in the statistically valid survey was how people fault about property taxes and parks. And really, what we heard in a nutshell was that the majority of respondents said yes, they would consider increasing a modest tax increase for parks. And there was a slightly higher suggestion that there might be stronger support for increasing maintenance in parks. You know, that said, it is an opinion of a statistically valid survey, so it should be representative of the community, but the question of parks taxation is always a difficult one. And not on my slides, because they're not very excited, are the summary tables that are included at the very end of the plan in Section Seven. Really, what this is, is the kind of practical implementation of all the recommendations. What we do is take the recommendations, the priorities that people talked about, combine them into a series of tables that would typically be used by staff to say, here's the various projects that we might consider bringing forward in the short term, medium, long term, as well as what ones might have to wait for development, and some of the ongoing recommendations moving forward. So that brings me to the end. Thank you all very much for bearing with me. And just thanks again. I can say with certainty that I've really enjoyed my limited time working on it, and Kate had a lot of positive feedback about having the opportunity to work on it as well. So hopefully, we've done justice to the ideas that community has said, and look forward to hearing feedback and hopefully finalizing the report. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and thank you and your team for all the work that went into it. I'll have to admit, I haven't read it line by line, and I usually do, and I will, but it wasn't the last seven days or not a week when I could actually do that. And my hard copy didn't have the appendices, because I'd kind of like to see that survey with more detail as well, so I'll get to that. But I thought it was a really good plan, and it was really useful for the council, unfortunately, at a late date in our term, to get a really strong sense of how the parks have been functioning well. And obviously, we've got the good structure and bones to parks and how much the community wants that to be a core part of our community. And I think we sometimes lose sight of that when we're busy with our financial plans, our budgets, or some of the other things. And this really brings that home, and did to me, and also just how successful so much of it already is. But it has to be maintained and developed as we keep growing. Counselors, any specific questions? I actually have a specific question later, but any specific questions or comments? Counselor Inster?
Of course, I have a lot of questions. But I just wanted to start on the beginning of the process that you undertook with your partner that's unable to be here today, for a good reason. Unable to be here today for a good reason. But the statistical analysis that the chair referred to in terms of looking more deeply into that. When I look at the information that's gathered for reports such as this and the information, the details of that information. I start to look for if there's anything missing. So I wondered if you could speak to the. Who came out to the presentations and who spoke to it? And specifically, when I've looked at the iteration previously, I was wondering if you received. Because you didn't unfortunately receive a lot from sports groups and that's something going forward that it would be good to address is that. Did you get a lot, did you get a lot of people under fifty coming to this meeting to talk about the, our parks and things like that? That's one question.
Okay, well, I'll start with that one. So I, unfortunately, I'm a little bit limited because I, Kate was the one that was there. You know, in terms of the statistically valid survey, I do think it was more, it was a better representation of the community as a whole. I do recognize Seashell somewhat above average when it comes to age. So it is likely that we were getting. And, and it is very typical for especially open houses for getting, yeah, people in the older age categories. But without actually attending them, I probably shouldn't comment on exactly how many, what representation there was.
Yeah, and given that the population under fifty is declining. And the population over fifty is increasing, we would expect that, exactly that demographic turnout.
So I just have to look at more of the data than as you are proposing to do to get more of that information. Okay.
I was also interested in the fact that the sports, the organized sports did not connect. I don't know if they're connecting through the RD or not, but it was a really notice and you reached out more than once.
Yeah, there was two.
Something going on.
Two points of connection, two efforts to respond. We did hear back from two of the community sport groups, which was good. But it was less so than we would have anticipated. We usually do hear quite a bit from those organizations.
And the one you heard from was only because we put a stick in their hornets nest.
Oh, who is the other, who is the other one?
It's a slow pitch and a fast pitch.
Slow pitch and fast pitch.
Those are the only two? Not soccer?
Not from soccer, no.
Wow. Okay, well, it's good to know.
Anyways, you had some other.
Yeah, just going through, going through your report and. Just, you know, in terms of some of the information, I just wanted to mention a couple of things is that we have quite an extensive. Green network and we have quite an extensive tree program and we're starting to find more and more information. That how that helps with some of the challenges that people face and we're now hearing that. And, and this is why I think it's important for us to continue with our trail network and continue with our. Our passive parks and, and continue with that plan and continue with our planting program because we're now hearing that. Greenery and trees and that help with people with that are early onset dementia and dementia issues. So now hearing once again that our green space enhancement and the green work that we're doing within our community has. Once again, another benefit for the community other than many other things that it does for our cardiovascular systems and our health. So I just wanted to mention that and, and also to the, the trail linkages that. You, you mentioned that that's, that's really important going forward, how, how we are able to develop the. And we do have some opportunities from the downtown core to West Seashell, which was a huge missing piece now that those subdivisions are coming in. But I think we have to be really clear in our negotiations with the development community that we need those. We need those amenities in place as we go forward and to continue to talk about that and continue to include that as part of our plan. But that, that's it for now. If you want to ask more questions, I have some other things to just mention as well.
We got an amended version today. Is that mostly typos and things of that nature? I was gonna ask what the difference was.
It did include the executive summary, which we printed off for you. And it had some updated mapping in it.
The appendices were in that one as well. As well as typos.
I wasn't sure how much to mark up the one I was doing. I'll mark the final. Anything else, first thoughts or, or next steps?
Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I looked at the, the neighborhood focused projects, in particular the village. And, and I looked at another one, which was the Hackett Park Community Gathering Space. I wondered if any thought had been given to the space between this building, which houses City Hall, the library. And going across to Seaside Center, there's quite a space in there that if we were to do something with that roadway coming through. We could have a downtown. Park, not huge. Was there any thought given to that at all?
I might, I might defer to Perry a little bit on this one. I, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, that was included on the statistical valid survey and at the open house questions. So it was included and it, I was also surprised that Hackett Park, or somewhat surprised that Hackett Park came out on top. As the preferred community use space, but as Yana had mentioned earlier, I think that had a lot to do with it. Being used as such by, you know, a lot of different events that we have there, including the upcoming. Craft Fair, so. It was considered.
I think, I think existing use really drives people's understandings of future use as well. And there would be different types of gathering spaces, the kind of activities I could see at Hackett Park. Over time would be different than what I would see if we. Had a more urban kind of space between City Hall and, and Seaside Center. We need a place to protest in Seashell and, and a smaller venue that's contained and close to the police station is good for that. As the Victor, as the Vancouver Art Gallery now once was, City Hall and then other things. But, but for larger gatherings and music and, you know, three or four hundred or five hundred people out than the Hackett Park Bowl. Or the Top End works really, really well. We don't want more than three or four hundred at a protest. Counselor Mueller.
Yeah, I guess for myself, I, I liked the report. It was well done. It's a good update to everything that we're doing. But I think what something that was lacking was in Seashell, we have a lot of sensitive environments. So we have so many beach accesses, get down to a beach access and we know that these places can be affected quite quickly. Once, once human activity starts to take place there. And we've been dealing with overfishing, illegal fishing, that type of thing in Seashell. And I'm just, I wanted to see that highlighted throughout the report a little bit better. Just to talk about some of these really sensitive environments, such as the, the dried Douglas fir, which we have here, which is considered to be endangered. These types of things, I would really like to see highlighted in the report in its final draft. Thanks.
Were the environmentally sensitive areas even a part of the terms of reference? No, not really. So how, how do we address that reality? Because our, our committee structure is actually parks, public works and environment. So we tend to think of those together, but this was put together in two thousand and sixteen with a more. Direct link to existing and human-based parks, I guess I would say, as opposed to nature. But can anybody speak to that, how we might incorporate? The concerns about the environmentally sensitive parts of our natural habitat?
Lanark speak to how it can in this project, but in a lot of cases, it's done as a, as a separate type of study. Because usually the kind of analysis and technical analysis you do behind ESAs and, and Habitat. Habitat Connections and those kind of things are done differently. They're, they, they can overlap on some, but it's usually a different scope and usually. A slightly different project team on something like that.
If I may, I, I think it is a good question and, you know, at, at the very least, I think it is important to. Acknowledge or map potentially those locations because it is part of your open space network. The distinction and always where we try to take care is that if we make it sound too much like a park, people want to go into it. Versus, you know, sometimes some of those sensitive areas simply just need to be protected and people need to remain out of them. So there's definitely no harm why we can't, I, I don't see an issue with at least acknowledging these places exist and the importance behind them. We probably don't have the capacity to go in a lot of detail about how to manage them. But also clearly defining that there are spaces that aren't for people as part of the structure.
And Counselor Inkster.
Yeah, I mean, that, that speaks to the overall plan that we may need to have going forward. As part of our park acquisition, park development plan that we, not only for park development, but strategic acquisition, acquisition of land. When we acquired the Mission Point Park a number of years ago, one of my really heavy-duty pushes and lobbying for that is that we. Would be able to secure the base of Chapman Creek and its number of different ecosystems for protection and, and potential. Education, not necessarily enhancement, because that's not been done if you speak to parks and what Perry's been doing along there. Enhancement in the sense of ac- access to view, but not access to the, the creek side and the shoreline necessarily there. Because we have to have strategic, in a sense, positioning as, as an accountable and reliable government to protect. Those ecosystems. So I think those are the kinds of things that we're being, we're asking and that we do and we should continue to do. Because we have another, a number of other stream sides in the district. Wakefield Creek is an example of an area that we've protected. And I think we should be looking at other creek sides in order to, as we develop the lands adjacent to them. To make sure that there's a protective component as part of that. And we've been doing and I think we should continue to do that without question. And, and I wanted to just mention a couple of other things as well. The, just a couple of things that were mentioned, the fitness equipment that, that was mentioned in as part of your report. I have told council that a good job was done by Rotary and Powell River to put in some fitness equipment. And I, I see some opportunities within our district in areas that are heavy duty, heavy. Heavy-duty treed, which we could put in fitness equipment amongst the treed areas that we don't see a lot of people in. Sometimes at Hackett Park, there's areas you can see where there's rooting going on that people just don't tend to go in there very much. We could probably look at those areas as an example, an underutilized area that we could put fitness equipment in. For people to do outside exercise, different than walking and running that, that they tend to go to the gym for. So those are opportunities and we have a very active service clubs, a number of them. One that was just actually busy last weekend, painting Hackett, that I'm sure Perry knows about. The Rotary Club was in there last weekend doing some good work there. So that's the kind of the thing that I would like to see. And you mentioned our playing fields. I think that going forward, because some may say, oh, predictably Inkster is going to talk about more playing fields. As a matter of fact, a couple, number of years ago, I didn't support one in West Seashell to Cascade Green. Nor did I think one large one near the inlet was needed yet. So I think we need to be, but we always, always need to look forward to a plan for them in terms of a large-scale urban. Development or a large-scale urban build-out and then we should look at a larger park in the middle of all of that as we do the planning. So that's where I think we should be considerate of and the fact that there wasn't a lot of sports groups or under fifties talking about. An all, an all-weather field and you didn't, it's nowhere in here. That surprises me. That's where I'm like, wow, where were those groups? Not that the district, because as council also knows, I'm involved in organizations that like fields. But I've not necessarily supported one in Seashell because I don't think that our taxpayers should be. One hundred percent responsible for the provision of that kind of field because it's very expensive. So we just have to have a plan around that. And the other thing around our playing field is I would, I think the time is coming where we should consider. A larger set of bleachers at Kinnick Park. So I didn't see that in there, but we have. Our, some of our park developments, we get to a point where, okay, now we've done lighting, we've done washrooms, we provided an area for people to barbecue. We've done all these things, so we're creating this sort of expectation and infrastructure. So that masses of people will come there and Kinnick, Kinnick's a great place. So that's, I think, our next thing that we should start planning for. But I, you know, I always try to keep in mind our money going forward and what we can afford. And I think that's something we could afford with some planning over a number of years, but it's, I think it's time has come.
Counselor Wright, oh, sorry, Counselor.
Thank you. I want to speak to the beach access. Having grown up here and not knowing half of these trails existed to the water. We all had our own special, private, quiet, nobody knew about trail. But I think this is so important as our community grows to share those accesses. And make them accessible to everyone. The other thing is the accessibility at the beachfront here. I really would fight having that roadway closed. Having observed and met and talked to a lot of the people that drive and park there. It's the only spot they can take someone that is incapacitated. Where they can sit and actually hear the water. You can't at Davis Bay because of the traffic. But there, at that beachfront, you can sit with your windows open and hear the ocean. And for a lot of our elderly and people in wheelchairs. It's too difficult for their partner to bring them from the parking areas on the downslope up that hill. And sometimes it's too cold too. So I really would hesitate to have that turned into pedestrian only. I think there's ways we can make it safe for both and keep that ability there. For people who truly enjoy that connection to the ocean. But thank you for your report.
Thank you for that defense of the Boulevard. It's been an item of debate in this town for twenty years. Still open, so I guess calluses prevails on occasion. Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a very good report, so thank you for that. I note though that on the community-wide projects, the first four, four projects according to the community. Are high priority and yet as I look through the recommendations, they're ongoing and long-term. And it makes me pause for a moment and go, hmm, in the next four years, other than the ongoing piece, how do I finish any of those? And that's kind of interesting. And so that leads me back to, oh, I better start looking at the ones I can start doing something about. And going back to the environment, Counselor Mueller made a, made a very good point. Because if you go down to the Davis Bay Dock, for instance, and you check out the number of crab traps that are in there. And how many people are actually crabbing, there's more traps than there are fishermen or crabbers. And I happen to know that there's a lady goes down there on a regular basis and she checks the bucket to see what size the crabs are. And whether or not they're male or female. And then she goes around to each one of the crabbers and said, is that your bucket? And after everybody on the dock tells her no, she picks the bucket up and empties it back into the ocean. I won't tell you who it is. But it's, it's what happens on a every-other-day basis, especially during the summer months. So there is some sort of a need, okay, to sort of set some standards, okay, about what we are going to allow happening. In some of these, these areas that are very sensitive environmentally. Thank you.
Counselor Mueller, and then I'll have a couple of.
Yeah, I think this, this provided us a really good upper-level view. And, you know, my point about the environment was just because it's so fundamental to our vision, which was one of the key documents here. It's an ecosystem-based document and we need to keep that going moving forward. It's very much the basis of what we're doing here and as we urbanize, it's going to become even more and more important. But I think we are very blessed with, with parks in our park system in Seashell. There's very little that I would look at and say that we need. But what has been identified is that classic civic gathering center park, which we do not have in Seashell. And that's the only thing that we, we really need to add because we don't have that place where people come and, and have that connection. And in my, in my travel since being on council, I've definitely looked at other communities to see what I like about their areas. And I think up in Powell River at Willington Beach, there's something there that, that I really look at and say, that's fantastic. Lakeside Park in Nelson, another fantastic park. And a lot of these parks are older. So they were, they were done in years gone by when, when we had a different sense of scale and they're still fantastic to this day. So there's no question to me, that's our number one priority and followed closely by the trail connectivity. It's quite, quite pertinent. Thanks.
I could follow up on this question to Perry, actually, on the trail connectivity. I was reading through this and it talked about a. I was reading through this and it talked about a trail between Bay Road and Davis Bay Road. And for the life of me, I didn't know where it was unless you meant Whittaker. I can see one, there's one at the end of Laurel that is just like, there's a couple of cul-de-sac connectors, but I wonder what was referenced in terms of a trail?
I would have to refer to that myself. We could be talking about the Eagleview to Chapman connecting that connector.
Maybe, but that was Chapman. It actually said Beta Trail Bay, Beta Davis Bay, which is why I was surprised.
Yeah, that, that's part of the potential system that's part of the, when you go up from Brookman Park behind Davis Bay School and then there's the connector up
That's true.
From the bottom of Davis Bay up to what we call Lesway Park and Bay Road there.
Well, that's possible.
So that's probably the connector they were talking about. I'd have to refer to, are they talking about it as being built or as needed?
I think it was existing.
Yeah. Well, that would be the one. It's actually paved and goes from Lesway Park down to the back of Davis Bay Road.
It eventually gets to Bay Road, but yeah, I think it was just, maybe it was just the way it was identified as opposed to, I didn't even think of which is actually, what you're talking about is actually from Mission Road to Lesway Road.
True.
Technically, nobody knows that's Mission Road, but
That's also true.
Interesting. And to follow up on one of the comments that Counselor Wright made, I was very fascinated with the, with the tenure update and because that is what can you get done and what and who did it and when? And I notice election years are useful for many small projects, but for sustained work, it's pretty much sustained. It's been going on over every couple of years, but it's definitely dropped off in 2016 and 17 and there's nothing for 18 here. So I thought that was quite interesting to see that. I was graphing as I was reading through just by the years to see what was getting done and by who. And the difference is between getting a major plan like this and then looking through for larger projects or getting a lot of murals and things done on washrooms. Would you consider the Pride Cross Walk on Cowrie Street as a park or an amenity? Or is that what you mean by animated destinations?
Yeah.
I still find that interesting because it's not the destination that's animated, but some destinations are more lively, I guess, once people are there. Anything else? Counselor Inkster?
Yeah, if we could touch on and Counselor Lutz's
Oh, one more, too.
Comments on beach accesses and securing continuous access, this was an important one to reiterate, is the dog park issue. It's been discussed before and we pursued a couple of ideas over this term in terms of what to do with that. And I've looked at a number of them in communities because, because I have a dog and obviously you have to bring your dog to those parks for a run around, et cetera. And I've seen a few and the most recent one I saw was in Chilowack where they took old armed forces land and converted it. And what, they have so much land provided to them that, and it's an old, older park situation, much like Counselor Mueller referred to of Nelson, which we've all seen in Paul River, which has been existent for 50 years so they can do additional things, is they've divided the dogs up into large and small and put fencing around each. And they've also had, I don't know what you'd call it, a vestibule or something outside of the park, outside of the gated area so that you can actually, that's where, so if you open it to get your, go in, get your dog, there's water there and your dog, dogs can't run out. So those are ideas that we could probably do on a smaller scale if we're finally able to identify a place to do that. So you do the fencing, you do the outside fencing and you just have to make sure that you're near a water source if we also do that so that we can have water for the dogs. So that's something that we've heard about, that we've talked about. We know our community has a lot of dogs. I would love for us to turn our attention to that in the next few years in order to maybe, and it would be great if we could actually do large and small, a separation, theorizing that probably the smaller dog park needs, can be smaller and things like that. So it was just, it was a really good concept with the vestibule and the water available, but I'd love for us to start talking about that.
Yeah, we do need to move on that. We almost did in 2017, 2016, as I recall. I was surprised that the Eptide Park seemed to drop in priority and I haven't actually seen the numbers, but it's there, but it wasn't certainly in the top six, top five. And so is that reflective of the community interest or is it more of a neighborhood concern than a Seashell concern?
I think it is. It's just more reflective of the community interest and it's not to say that any of those 12 on that list are unimportant. I think all of them are. The ones at the front are the ones that were talked about the most, but that doesn't, I think, you know, when I look at all 12 of those, I think moving any of those forward in the short term would be a win for the community. So I think there's some flexibility in how they're prioritized, certainly.
Maybe that's the work we'll have to do next when we read this really carefully and take this into the next two and a half months, which will be a prioritizing exercise for the entire community. We could help get their help in that. Different counselors could put different ones forward and see who gets top ballots. Then your project gets priority in January of 2019. Does that work? Okay. Anything else while we have our consultants with us? Perry's here too?
Yeah, I would, Eptide Park, I'd just clear some underbrush. That's all we'd probably need to do in one case. That's all we need to do for now. Inexpensive.
Thank you, Jana.
Thank you.
We appreciated you stepping in for Katie and your voice held up pretty well and I was thinking
One moment, but I got, I got through it.
As somebody who's worked with his voice for most of his adult life and most of his teen life as well, I find that a sweet bourbon or whiskey in your water bottle instead of water, Drumbeauie works well, but if you can't afford Drumbeauie Southern Comfort when I was young, it's much better than water and cough drops.
Learned something new today. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council committee members while we're here or should we look for adjournment? How about next steps, thinking about what we do with this? Some maybe some, pardon? The finalize will be in September? Well, then that is the next steps. I have one here that says final draft, July 2018. It's right in front of me. That's why I was misled. Counselor Inkster?
So this final report goes, obviously it goes to, I'm not even sure if it goes to council.
It could either go directly to council, but if, but if it's, if it hasn't, if there is another one coming, I think it should go to Parks Committee.
Okay, great.
And then feed up to council.
And that's good in one thing and that I chair the committee, but it's difficult in another because the committee members will probably ask somebody else to chair halfway through that because I'll have a lot to say again. Anyway.
There'll be recommendations and I think it'll be a matter really of just packaging it and sending the recommendations to council unless you really disagree with some.
Yeah, and I guess some of the comments that were provided today were, were going into maybe in some way to the final report if in fact there's some merit. I don't know how this
We could probably get a paragraph on environmentally sensitive areas, three sentences maybe of reference, references and a step of how that would be a different process, but what needs to be done and thoughtful. And perhaps some of the, some of the other questions will, will lead to a review of the precise wording in some of this.
It'll be interesting because going forward, I won't necessarily utilize this as my Bible on the subject, but it's a good reminder as to where some of the community members are on what we need to be focusing on.
Well, it's a good plan. I hope council, when it gets there, will adopt it and use it, use it as a Bible, actually as a blueprint. Not a Bible, a blueprint. Anything else? I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Lutz and Counselor Mueller adjourned. Pam, I saw you disagreeing with, with closing off the Boulevard.